Oh, really? Well. All right. Well, good evening. We are here for our city council workshop at 1,800 hours. And I'm going to turn it over to the next one.
Well, actually, this agenda item, discussion regarding sports complex, was requested by Councilwoman Hazelwood. Renee does have some history on it. We also have some site maps, thank you, plans that we can show on TV to see what we've done in 1999 and also 2009.
Correct.
So this has been a discussion for many years. I haven't heard from Trey. So do you want to see the site plan on what was proposed back in 99 and 2009?
Is this the same stuff we rehashed time and time again?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So it's just bringing up old information, you know, for people who might have slept since then, but there's nothing...
Well, and we've got some information we put out, how hard we've tried to get property. That'd be great, yeah.
Okay. Well, we tried to come up with some new ideas. And Richard Hendricks is here tonight. Jan Goodyear was going to try to be here, and several other people that want to try to help us build the Field of Dreams for Guthrie. And hopefully, we can come up with a workable idea that we can take to several people to present. Since we have all this work that's already pre-done on it, that's a lot of work that we don't have to worry about. And we might as well take a long shot here that we can make it happen. And the right people are here. I'd like to hear Richard Hendricks speak after we do all this other.
Let's just see if you can see it a little bit closer.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Erin, if you could... Oh, thank you. Erin's got the first slide up there. That's the site plan. Well, as Wanda said, this project basically began back in 1999. There were a number of phases that we were looking at. Phase one would have the sports field, and then phase two, a community center. Items that would be in this particular phase would be softball fields, baseball fields, trails, volleyball courts, concessions and such. Then the plans were to expand the project to include a full community center that would have an indoor, a series of indoor basketball courts, indoor swimming, multipurpose rooms, kitchen, and that sort of thing. The location initially, back in 1999, was proposed to be just off of Pine Street, south of University. At the time, there was a large movement. They tried to get funding for the project through a number of different venues, including grants and such, but that did not come about. So a great set of plans ended up waiting for a better time. The whole process then got resurrected about three years ago. And the purpose there was to update the architectural plans that were initially put together by the architect with the thought of adding splash pad, dog parks, outdoor movie venues. One of the other things that a number of people on the committee also wanted us to look at was creating a miracle field for children with special needs. There was evidently close to 2,000 of our young people who have special needs, and so we wanted to address that as well and include that in the 2009 version. We also wanted to take a look at possibly a fine arts and a performing arts capacity within this area. The idea at that time, and I think should continue to be for this type of project, was to put it in a location within the city where it would be easily accessible by citizens of all ages. We need a community center and ball fields that are easy for children to access, so we wanted to keep it closer into the core of the city. Again, at that time, we took a look at it, had a proposed very rough ballpark cost of somewhere between $8 to $12 million. Now, that's not just the ball fields, but also the building as such. In looking at all of the other things that the city was needing to do at that time, this fell under the category of great idea, wrong time. And the decision was made then to put this on the back burner and do the things that we needed to do to get fixed, to support the city through infrastructure improvements and such. In the course of that time, we had a great steering committee that came together. We put together marketing brochure, marketing information, solicitation plan and such. It's there. It's waiting to be developed. Again, if we want to resurrect it as another incarnation and take a look at other possibilities, now may be the time. Councilman Hazelwood?
The English property is up for sale now. And Trey, do we know how much that land's going for? Have you heard, Richard?
No.
Well, the English property is the area that you're talking about.
Right.
If we had the funds to buy that land, that land really should go for Guthrie for this project. There's no better site, I think, that would bring the people closer to downtown to shop also from that area. And you and I had discussed that. And Richard Hendricks is here tonight. The idea that we have is that in the center of all this, we could build the museum, for the Oklahoma Sports Museum, to be centered right in the middle of the complex. And there's not a better person I know here that knows sports to help set up, if we can pull this off, if we can get the OSU people to back us on this Field of Dreams that we have, or the sports museum to put it with our complex. The idea is to get a lot of the OSU people to back it for us, that they want to see it happen, and take this project to T. Boone Pickens. He's one of the few men in the world that loves Oklahoma, loves OSU people. And if we put this package together properly, I think there's a good chance he might fund it for us. He's that kind of person. And Richard has to get permission from his people if this can all come together to house the sports museum right in the center of this whole complex will be absolutely... They would never have to move again. They wouldn't have to worry about it. I discussed it to some extent with Jim Algren. The whole concept of it is a win-win project for Guthrie. It's to get us to where we can get that income, that money coming in. And this Field of Dreams, if we as a city council can take it on and put this package together like no one's ever seen before, and we're going to have a wonderful leader, a city manager, Serena Breland, and with the other people here to go with it, to present it to T. Boone Pickens, we have a 50-50 chance of pulling off something that will be so wonderful for this town, for everybody in this town, from the children to the senior citizens, to all of us. It would really be a wonderful thing. Right now, all of this is a dream on a piece of paper, but we have the real people here that it's going to affect that can help bring it in here. And Richard Hendricks' dream of the sports museum is beautiful, but to finish it off right, we've got to house it in the middle of this. And I think there's a good chance, if we all... Jan Goodyear wants to work on this. If the city council can see the merit in it, this Field of Dreams could really put Guthrie on the map. We would have all that income coming in here all the time off the sports complex. And who better person than knows the sports complex than Richard Hendricks? There isn't anybody better than that. That thing could be booked up year-round practically. But if we put all these people in place and put all these plans together and then have our leader take it to T. Boone Pickens, we've got a 50-50 chance of making this piece of paper happen. And I really believe in it wholeheartedly with all my heart. So all I'm asking you to do is to give it a blessing. We'll put the package together with Renee, and we'll see if we can make it fly. And that all hinges on if Richard can get the okay for his museum to be housed in something like this. Richard, do you want to add anything to that?
Five years ago, if... Just give you a brief history right here. It won't take very much time. You know, we opened this in 96, the Oklahoma Sports Museum, in 96. Five years ago, our board had met with the board from the Jim Thorpe Association in Oklahoma City, and they were in the process of putting together a Hall of Fame building there that they estimated would cost five, around $5 to $5.5 million. And they were interested in merging these two organizations together. They were both 501(c)(3)'s. Our board and myself did not know exactly how it would be carried on here in the future once we got to a point where I was not in position to run it. And so we moved to merge with the Jim Thorpe Association, and so we were all under that Therefore, as we look at this complex, if we would put a building in the middle of this complex for the museum, there's two or three scenarios that could happen right here. First of all, when this five years is up, which is next August, the Jim Thorpe Association is going to make a decision on whether to continue it like it is, to see if somebody else is interested in keeping that museum here in Guthrie open, or closing that museum. Those are basically the three directions they could go. Which way will they go? I have no idea. I wish I could say I did. I thought that they would continue that museum just like it is right now, except they would hire an intern or someone to help with the museum in Oklahoma City and also supervise this one here, and then hire one or two employees to keep this open here. I would hope that's what they do. But this is public information, so I'm not saying anything off the cuff. They invested more money in that building than they had raised in Oklahoma City. They had raised about $5 million, and they invested about $7.5 million. And they borrowed that money from a bank in Stillwater. And as that has transpired in the last three years, they have had trouble meeting that, raising enough money to meet that loan. And so that building, and this is not... This is public information, but it's not really been publicized a great deal. And I'm not interested in people publicizing this, you know, and putting it... Although I think if we're talking about this, we need to know where all the cards need to all be on the table. And I'm just trying to be as honest with you as I can be. But so they sold that building to the Chickasaw Nation because Jim Thorpe is Native American. And so the building in Oklahoma City belongs to the Chickasaw Nation. And the Jim Thorpe Association leases that building from the Chickasaws with the option to buy that back if they can raise the money to buy it back. So consequently, the only real concrete assets that the Jim Thorpe Association has are our buildings, besides the memorabilia that they have in the Hall of Fame, the memorabilia that we have, and the money they got in the bank, okay? Which they got more than what they... They got something to run their operation on. And that's why I don't know what they're going to do when August comes. There was some talk, and there still is, because we also embraced the Bricktown Rotary Club three years ago to help us put on the Lawrence Pond Award. And instead of embracing us and working together, they have tried to take that thing and kind of run with it. They have suggested that it might be a good idea to move the Lawrence Pond statue that is here to Oklahoma City. And that's just an idea that's being kicked around. Here again, I'm just trying to tell you like it is, okay? Because I don't want something to come up. And they said, "Well, we didn't know that." I don't think that'll happen. First of all, because that statue that's in the museum was partly a centennial project, and some of the money that went to pay for that statue was centennial money designated for Guthrie. And I have let them know that. I've said, "You know, moving that statue's not as simple. It's not easy to move it out of that building, but it can be moved out of there. We move it in, I can help move it out. We can get it out." But the movement of the building, the technicalities of moving the building are not simple. And I'm going to make that aware continually. I've already made it aware to some people in Oklahoma City, and they are behind us keeping it here. So as far as I'm concerned, that statue will stay in Guthrie, whether it's at that facility or another facility, okay? Now, and so... But I say, in August of next year, and we come to the end of this five-year period in this contract, they say, you know, "We just can't see unless Guthrie wants to raise the money to pay for the operation of that building. We can't see that we can afford to keep it open, and we're going to close that building." If they did that, then we would have to come back with them, and I would. And some of our past board members would back me on that. And we've talked about this, of then of just rescinding that contract with them, taking the whole thing back. Then if we did that, then we've got to decide a way to finance it. Those buildings, when they were given to Jim Thorpe Association, were without. They had no lien against them. They were paid for. That's just the way I did it. I didn't do anything we couldn't pay for. They were amazed whenever they walked in there and saw those buildings. They'd seen the buildings when we began that project. They thought I was crazy. And but then after they saw what we'd done with them, they were interested in them. And the first thing Lynn Draper asked me was how much do you owe on those buildings? I said, "We don't know anything on those buildings." "You don't know anything?" I said, "No. We have done this as we can do it and pay for it as we go." And so that's the case, as far as that part goes. There's 13,000 square feet there, so those buildings are without any indebtedness against them. But they are the property of the Jim Thorpe Association. We could not have sold those buildings. If we had, we'd have to given that money to... Those were incorporated under 501(c)(3), and so those did not belong to any particular group. They belonged to that 501(c)(3) corporation. And so that's why it had to be done the way it was done, and to be legal and honest. And so this sports complex, we've been talking about that, like they've said, since 99. We talked about this when I was still in the school business, and that was in the mid-'90s or early '90s. There's nothing that Guthrie needs any worse than that, I don't think. Oh, there's a lot of things Guthrie needs. But being a sports nap... Well, you know, that's one of the things we definitely need for our kids and to bring money into Guthrie. You drive out there, and you see them at Chickasha, and you see them at Kingfisher, and you see them... As we go to Arlington, there's one right there by the highway.
Ardmore.
Ardmore's got them.
Yeah.
Falls Valley's got one. And so it would be a great asset for this community. I don't think there's any doubt about that. If we want to include a building for the museum, that would give us some leverage coming up whenever we come to the end of this five-year contract then.
And that's in July, right?
It's in, yeah, first of all, yeah. It's next summer. They have insisted that we should try, that Guthrie should, I should be able to raise money here in Guthrie to try to pay for the expenses of keeping that building open. And so we have tried to do that in several different ways. We have had a campaign recently to add, see if people want to be a sponsor for as little as $500 a year. That's $50 a month. That's not... I can't fill my Jeep up for $50 anymore. And our gold sponsors, $2,000; silver sponsors, $1,000; bronze sponsors, $500. I've got several people that are part of this program. We need additional. Here again, just to tell you how it's worked, there's a program that federal government has called Experience Works. And for the last eight years, we have used ladies that have been part of that program. And it's a federal program that pays senior citizens in a medium or lower income to work for a nonprofit for about 20 hours a week at minimum wage. And the two ladies that have helped me now at the museum have been with me now six years. One of them, because she is not... She just has reached 65. She's not in her 70s, and she's been on the program five years. Last year, they terminated her in that program. And so we kept her on, and we have raised money. This money right here, and some other money we've raised, has helped to pay her that 20 hours a week at $7.50 an hour. But the Jim Thorpe Association is requiring me to raise that money if we're going to do it. But we don't have... We've set that in a different account. Whenever I send that in to Jim Thorpe, I say, "Put that in on a staff fund." And I've got several... There are about four or five businesses here that give me $50 a month, and I send that in with that.
Richard...
If there's any questions you've got about the situation or about where we are, I'll be more happy to answer.
Richard, if the city was able to somehow put this together, do you think we've got a 50-50 chance with Jim Thorpe of moving the museum into it?
Well, I think there probably is. I... Because I... There's nobody really excited about keeping that going.
Well, that's what I was worried about. And it couldn't be situated at a better place. I mean, it's just such a drawing to this whole concept and idea, and what we could build around it, and it's right reachable to downtown. It all intersects together. I've never seen a plan that looked any better than this for Guthrie. And the fact that we've got a chance at getting the museum right in the center of it, oh, that's wonderful.
After your question. Number one, you have been such a pillar of that museum for many, many years. I don't know that people know how hard you've worked. And when I helped or was working with you years ago on getting the statue here, Lawrence Pond statue and all that, and here it's gone. It's kind of, you know, to hear that somebody might take that away from you. I don't know. Anyway, but my question to you is, what part do you want to play in this project?
In this project? Well, you know, if we move forward with this and included something for the museum, I would work with the board or whatever would be part of the board. I can't... I don't think I'm in a position to lead this thing, but Jan Goodyear was one of the leaders of that committee that met a few years ago, Renee, and Eddie, and there were some others that came. And so, you know, I would be willing to help and go talk with anybody and, you know, share with them what the situation is. And of course, I would definitely be the one to go approach the board at the Jim Thorpe Association.
Is there anybody from Guthrie on that board?
Well, not really. Not on their main board. They have... When we first joined with them, they were supposed to allow us to put three people on the board. They put two on to begin with, myself and Jack Aaron. And then they have split their board, and now have a board that is over the whole Jim Thorpe Association, and they have a board over the Hall of Fame Museum and this museum. And so we are on that board. They moved us to that board. One of the reasons why I included in the contract that we have two board members was so that we would know what they're going to do with this in that five years and afterwards. But they have... They've kind of reneged on it, okay? And so Jack and I are not exactly keeping a note of what's going on. It's kind of like this statue deal. All of a sudden, Justin Lenhart, that used to be at the Territorial Museum, is now curator at the Hall of Fame, he shows up one day with a guy from Midwest Trophy and he wants to measure that statue. I said, "What are you doing?" He said, "Well, Eddie's thinking about moving that to the museum in Oklahoma City." I said, "Oh, he is? How's he answered anything to me about it?" Anyway, and so I called him, and I said, "Hey, man, what's the deal?" So he said, "Well, you know, they thought it might be good since Lawrence Pond Award's here, we have that statue here." I said, "Have you really thought about this?" I said, "First of all, you know, this is a complex deal." I said, "That's part of the centennial that Guthrie did. The other people that made donations to that are Guthrie people and athletes. If you put that in front of the Hall of Fame or at the east side of that Hall of Fame in Oklahoma City, what are you going to do for Steve Owens and Billy Sims and, you know, Barry Switzer?" And you could go on and on. There's forty... There's, you know, 67 people that are in the Hall of Fame. The only statue they've got right now is Jim Thorpe. Well, Jim Thorpe doesn't belong to anybody. He's just kind of out there in the clouds, you know? And it's got the Jim Thorpe name, so there's no problem with having the statue of Jim Thorpe. So once they start putting another statue out there and another one, you know, they're... Yeah, those cost about $100,000. Probably $120,000 it takes now to do that project.
My...
So we got it.
My last question for you is, you've worked with the Chickasaw now. What would you think about approaching them to help fund some of this?
Well, you never know. Those Indians will make a lot of money. One problem is this is the outside lands. This is not Indian land. That would be their first opposition to this. You know, we've really been over backwards on our centennial to involve the Native Americans, and they really appreciate it. But they had to be involved differently in what we involve here for the land run. They don't get too excited about 89 celebrations. And but I'm not saying they wouldn't on the sports complex, especially if we could entwine in that some Native American softball tournaments or something, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Because they're big in softball. The Native American people are. But, you know, I know any of it, and I know the people that are involved in the Native American Culture Center in Oklahoma City, but you see, it's on high center right now too. And, you know, one of the problems with that and the problems that has been from the very beginning, we as white Americans talk about them as Native Americans. They talk about themselves as 29 separate nations here in the state of Oklahoma. They don't all agree, and they all don't work together. That's why Culture Center is on high center right now, partly that in fact that legislature missed it by two votes, I think, for funding it. But, you know, they're not all... They're separate units. They're not all...
Well, that place in Sulfur, I don't know if you've ever gone, is just amazing what they've done.
Fantastic. It is. That's the Chickasaw Culture Center. And they were building that same time that it's...
Chicasa.
Yeah. It's beautiful, and it's going to grow and be bigger than ever. But before long, they're going to own the majority of the land down there around that. You know, Stan Griffin from here went to the bank, Cada, and he's living in Sulfur now, running that bank, Cada. You and I were talking. He said, "You know, Chickasaws own most of that land around there. They're going to own all of Oklahoma." And they are. And that's fine. I mean, they're part of Oklahoma, and that's fine. But, you know, they're going to build their Culture Center first because they want to promote the Chickasaw tribe. And that's an example of their solitary... They're not solidified together. They're individual units. I have a few copies of this. There's a magazine that is published in Oklahoma City called Pretty Magazine every month. And one of the writers for them did an article for us, and I've got three copies here. I'll leave them. You're welcome to look at them. This got through some good publicity. It got the museums good publicity. It didn't cost us a dime to get this kind of publicity. It didn't cost us a dime to get this kind of publicity. They, they put out about, about ten thousand of them, I think, is what they put out.
Richard, in July, when July comes, do you think we've got a fifty-fifty chance that if we can make this fly, if we can put this together and present it to the right kind of people, and we get funding for this, do you think we've got a fifty-fifty chance of keeping the sports museum here? If we can pull this off?
Oh, I think, even if they wanted to continue to be a part of it, if they saw that there was some funding here to help the expenses of that, of that facility, you know, you know, I think it'll stay here. But there is no place, they have no place for the memory value that we have there. If you go and visit their facility and go and visit ours, they are totally different. A young man was here today that's a intern from a U C O that's working with the Hall of Fame, and he's working on his master's degree, and he said, man, this is something else. He said, this is so different. Yeah, but where'd you get all of this, you know? If you go and look at both, there's no comparison in the amount of things that are in that museum and the amount of things that's in our museum.
Thank you. This is a great idea.
I'm sorry.
We've been a lot of people that's wanting to be involved in this for a lot of years. This is Mrs. Nephew's brainchild right here. And we, at a different time, we can discuss this a lot more. We need to move on. We've got.
I'll leave these. If any of you interested in being a part of this or anybody who wants to visit, you're welcome to. You can have those, whatever. I appreciate your time, and I think it's a great deal, and I'll be glad to help with it.
I remember some guys that put that in there.
Put what in?
The Warren Spahn in that building.
That's right.
Yeah. Me and about five firefighters and you.
Yeah, when they brought that in there, I said, who can I get to help us? We went over to the fire department, rounded up a few firemen.
Mr. Mayor, I hope this city council will really, really look at this, at, at what we can do as a council.
Thank you.
And all of us work together with Richard and, and Mr. Goodyear to put this package together, to present it to people that would want us, that would back us. And Richard's got the people. Kenneth Mitchell and the Davis Brothers would take our package to T. Boone Pickens. And that says a lot about them. They're Guthrie people, and they, they know that this could happen. But it'll take all of us to work with people like Richard Hendricks and Renee down there that has all those wonderful plans. If we move forward with this, let's not sit on it another fifteen years. Let's just make it happen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for your input. All right, let's get moving along here. We've got a lot of area to cover in thirty minutes to do it again.
G P W A meeting, of course, is the minutes and the claims. We also have approval of coal public works authority take or pay water purchase contracts, allowing the Guthrie Public Works Authority to provide water service to the town of Coyle. And, of course, when Matt was here, they started negotiations, discussion and negotiations. And actually, Randall kind of finished it up for me after Matt left. So I think I'm gonna turn it over to Randall to answer any questions the council might have.
Any question? I, I passed out another contract. It's got some additions to the one that was in your packet. John Wolf and Alan Brooks, there have been some changes. And so, paragraph twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five were added to what you have, basically. And Coyle has approved this already, approved these additions. But it has to do with the fact that they will not do anything that would impair our tax incentive status of the G P W A, basically, is what all that verbiage is doing. And paragraph thirteen is basically the same, but it was a little bit confusing. This is a twenty-year and six-month contract between two public works authorities, two trusts. Cities aren't involved. And after the year twenty thirty-two, then either party can terminate it. You can always amend by agreement, but you can't terminate this until after the year twenty thirty-two. And we, we wanna sell them water, so we're not just gonna terminate. Has an inflation escalator built in that I'm satisfied with, run by both Matt, when he was here, and Jim Melton, our other water org. Do we have to answer any questions?
Okay, is there any questions? Try to, you said as chair of the finance committee or?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that we had, the cost, the inflation cost in there, we have it built into this program. You know, that's the kicker there. And then, you know, I, I think it's a good deal for the city, you know? Obviously, we gotta take our pay with Coyle there and a need. We have, we have the ability to fill that need, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a good project.
It's a take or pay, so whether they use it or not, they're gonna pay us starting at forty-nine hundred and ten dollars a month, give or take, depending on construction cost.
And Max, how far are our lines from being able to hook up?
I think it's about a couple of miles.
Seventy-seven hundred feet.
Yeah, I knew it wouldn't be far.
Yeah, okay. I thought it was even less than that, but I knew we were talking a little.
It was in the contract. It's like seven thousand somewhere.
So this is gonna initially cost three hundred and fifty-five thousand?
Seventy-one hundred. That's the estimate.
Yeah, actually, it may be three forty.
So how are we, you know, I know we're, it's gonna be a user fee, you know, they're gonna pay monthly. But how do we finance it initially?
It's what, John's here. We're going to the Water Resource Board for a three hundred and forty thousand dollar loan.
And actually, that's item four on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's on the agenda tonight is to do that. Generally, that small loan is, you know, our people don't do it, but they're doing, doing this one because they know it's important to us and important to Coyle. We're building in that, you know, there's, you can read through there, it's like a buck ninety-one per thousand gallons initially that goes to pay for the construction of this one. And then, of course, they have this three dollar per thousand.
Yeah, Coyle is basically self-funding the project through water payments, so.
Their, their water payments pay for the picture project and pay for the water, pay for the construction project.
Any questions? Any other questions for our, for the shop? All right.
Okay. The next item is insurance on the armory at seven twenty East Logan Avenue. And Jim Algren has more information on that. He's just needing to get instructions.
Basically, Omeg, well, maybe back up a little history. You know, obviously, we got the, we got the armory back in March of twenty-eleven from the state. And when we received it, we knew and know that there's some, there's some issues with it with regard to asbestos and lead and that type of thing. So right now, it can't be used until those are remediated. And they've, they've, they've finished their revaluation. And I, if anybody's interested, I have a three-ring binder notebook about this size that talks about everything they looked at in there.
Casual reading?
So there you go. And then the next step for them is to, to abate it. And then, once that's done, then the city, then we can then go in and do activities in there, which now we're using it for storage. But anyway, when we acquired it, we elected, I guess through myself and Matt and, and we, in discussions, we, we elected not insured for the, for the full two point four, two point five million, in other words, the replacement cost. We picked a level of five hundred thousand dollars. We went with that. And, and the thought process being that if we insured for the full amount, we'd have to rebuild it in order to recoup the two point four million. Well, at today's level, that would be, as we said today, that would be about ten thousand dollars worth of insurance. And it would have been that last year, too, in terms of value. So instead of that, we insured it for five hundred thousand dollars, and that's two thousand dollars worth of insurance. If something were today to happen to the armory, worst-case scenario, tornado, I guess. Could be an earthquake, too, I guess. But, you know, a tornado, take that all out. Well, today, we probably, well, five hundred thousand would not rebuild it. However, Omeg would give us five hundred thousand dollars. And the city council, or the city would have five hundred thousand dollars in their account to deal with as they please. If they wanted to do something with that land, they could. If they wanted to take that five hundred and, and put it towards a sports complex, they could, or whatever. But the thought process was at the time to just save some money and, and, you know, not insure it for that full amount, just based on the structure and what it is. And so, we did that. Now, Omeg is saying, take it before the council, risk manager Algren, and, and get their approval, or get their approval to insure it for the full, full amount. And so, my recommendation is to go for the five, continue what we're doing with five hundred thousand dollars on that building. Or if you want to go the full two point four million, we can do that, too. And but, you know, it's gonna cost an additional eight thousand dollars to do that on an annual basis. And I don't know if that's the decision you wanna make or not. But I, I would recommend the five hundred thousand, but it's your call.
True.
Still worth two point million dollars for the asbestos center.
Well, there you go.
And what?
Okay. The next agenda item is the completion of the Sea Mom project. We want the trustees to approve the certificate of project contract completion.
Right.
So we can notify Water Resources Board that it is a complete.
That's correct.
And then we can get a final project, so we can get amortization schedule on what our debt will be.
Right.
So are there any questions on closing out the Sea Mom project?
They did a great job.
They did do a great job. Okay, the next one, we kinda hit on a little bit. But John Wolf from the municipal finance service is here to answer any questions on the financing application for the Coyle project.
Basically, this is the standard application for any of the Water Resources Board alone. Key thing that wasn't pointed out, you're gonna pass on the cost of the annual debt service to the, to the town of Coyle. The fortunate thing for Coyle is that this is considered regionalization. So in talking with Department of Environmental Quality, there's a very, very good chance that this will qualify for federal grant funding. So forty percent of this will actually, a very good chance, forty percent of this will be principal forgiveness. So the, the dollar figure for the cost per thousand as part of the take or pay more likely will be a lot less than a dollar ninety-one. So it's kind of a win-win. Coyle gets a chance to get a good water source, and they don't have to pay quite the, the cost of debt service that they would in, in another type of financing source. So, and we plan on submitting, with your, your approval of the resolution, authorizing submit the application, engaging us, and Alan Brooks' firm as bond counsel, along with Randall, we'll submit the application in the next three to four weeks, probably go to the January Oklahoma Water Resources Board meeting. And we'll kind of work and coincide with the, the actual going out to bid of the project and so forth, work with your engineer. And they'd be glad to answer any questions on this.
Pretty, pretty straightforward. Does Coyle have a date? Yeah, does Coyle have a date they wanna be online? Do we know exactly?
No, we don't have a date.
Don't have a date until I can.
DQ, actually, I'm waiting on the consent order to be getting me that. But it does, they said it, they would work with whatever we needed as far as the pipeline.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I wanna give them a pension or consent order.
Yeah, no, they said they would.
As long as they know we're working to help them out, then.
Are you blending now? What are you, what are you doing?
All we do is, we inject chlorine, and that's it. But our, our uranium levels are at twenty-nine to thirty point one, and so we're at the, that's it. We can't go any higher than that, and so we have to do something. And we talked about blending, but the other well had nitrates, and they just didn't see that that would be feasible.
Any other questions from council? Very nice.
We only have one more item, and that's Cindy at the library. She's wanting to apply for Let's Talk About Oklahoma. Can Cindy be here to answer any questions or explain it?
This is just the same grant opportunity that we're actually taking advantage of right now. The Read and Discuss Series will get local scholars in to kind of lead a great discussion. And it's just a great program. We've had excellent response so far this term. So this is for the spring semester. We already have a theme reserved for us. It's the Oklahoma Experience of the nineteen thirties. So there's some good stories in there, and hopefully, we'll, with, with your approval, we'll win the grant. Can I answer any questions?
So would you like me to speak to that thirties group?
You can be one of our guest presenters.
Always gonna get the best ideas.
This is all true of the communities.
Do we have any future items to put on the agenda that we wanna talk about?
Well, I was, before this meeting, I was talking with Maxine about the Vida out there. And I think it'd be good for us to get, have someone tell us what is going on with that thing. If we can get them in here, and it really needs to be moved up on the priority of this.
Sure. So you walked under it?
We have some kids to drive over.
Next workshop.
But we'll, we'll contact the people.
I have already sent him, I already sent Kyle McKinley an email asking him for a status report. And I let him know that I had council people asking about it, and that it is literally falling apart.
As we speak.
We understood that it was gonna be moved up because of the problems we had with it this summer. And I've heard nothing, so.
But we'll do our best on getting some answers and.
I've been asking.
Hopefully, a person. And we're sure it'll be in here. That way she can get up to speed on it also.
Cool.
How does the city council feel about putting a, a group of people together to make the ball field happen?
I, I think we need to maybe have a workshop, sit down and talk about what all has been done. And I, I think there's some things that people have not brought in. We would love to do it. Wow. I mean, it's been my dream since I've been mayor to see lights on the eastern part of South Guthrie.
Well, I could see you in front of T. Boone Pickens with Kenneth Mitchell.
I, I can, too.
I do. I'm serious. I'm really serious.
Yeah. Well, I, I won't have any problem with that. I just, there's, we have been, as me and, and Jan and Melody sat in front of the.
Let's take it that step further.
Sitting in front of the people that are in charge of the school land, trying to see if we could trade our eighty acres for eighty acres there to start. We've looked at the, the elevations of the English place and how many dollars it would take for us to move dirt to make that a viable situation if we bought it for X amount of dollars, and what it would take to make it a level playing field. You know, so a lot of those things need to be looked at. Now, I don't think there's anybody that sits here that don't think that that's a bright spot. If we could just afford to do it, you know, it took seven dollars and fifty cents from all of our people just to get our water good. And we just, we're working so hard to get us up to date to where we should have been fifty years ago. You know, you've been part of that, working hard for that. So I think it's a great idea. We just ever, I even tried to put a concert together, a multi-cultural concert, to get seed money, to do the blueprints, do whatever clerical work we had to do. So it's been on the drawing board, and I don't think anybody in this council is against it. We just have to find a way to finance it.
Well, can we, can we put the, put those group of people together so they can start working on it?
I, I don't see why. I mean, if it's not gonna take any current resources from us, you can just go, hey, go, go do it and.
Go with what we got in Nate's office.
And if Boone Pickens comes back and says, here's, not pull out my wallet, you know, he's that rich. Pull this one, give us some money, then, hey, lock us up. So if we might, I, I would say, we should just say, volunteer group, you guys wanna go present, then go for it. I mean, couldn't we just do that?
Sure. I don't think there's any problem with this.
Work with Renee. That makes you get all the facts and all the plans.
Or Renee will be right in the middle of it.
Yay.
A lot of those plans, though, are going to have to be redrawn if we're going to incorporate a museum and expand it and include some of those other, other things. Our last estimate that we got from the architectural firm to change the drawings was close to twenty thousand, just to redo the drawings.
Can we just go with what we have currently and just see if they're interested? And if they are, then.
We can do that.
Not, we're about twenty thousand. It's not gonna be bad.
Renee, if we put together with what we've got, and we've got the right people to take it to where it needs to go, and they wanna do it, there's a fifty-fifty chance we might get it. Where's the faith? I mean, you gotta believe. This field of dreams will happen. Just keep the faith. Renee?
Renee, we'll go.
Let's go see our people at vote bars.
Trey, air, quit grinning there.